Go ahead, open the select board meeting. I'm going to, at this time, open the public hearing for RSA 3195-B to accept the assistance to firefighters grant funds from FEMA in the amount of $24,376.19. So, public hearing is not over. And in the meantime, we'll hear from department heads. Chief Gamache, why don't you start us off since we're in the public hearing for the FEMA grant?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, chief.
Really, sound like a FEMA grant or does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. So, prior to this last one, comedian was wearing vacation, so my last two months, 265 incidents here, the date was still running close to 40% above last year volume-wise. Under the fire prevention tab, it's, I just finished a month of July, place of assembly permits, all the town buildings, library, this building, you know, the church and all the meeting places, those have to be inspected annually, and then basically a new period where you have to go up to be able to assemble in these places. So, those were done in July. Busy, busy fire prevention in July, we participated in the Canterbury Fair, we posted EMTs, including myself, for the road race. When that was done, we brought the fire truck down for a couple of hours, kids climbed over it, it was a big hit in the library parking lot, so that was good. Had a lot of good people, we always enjoy those events. Rachel also participated in Smokey the Bear Storybook, Smokey the Bear's 80th Birthday Party, came down, they had cake, and they read stories to the kids and cut a cake and all that stuff, and one of our members actually played Smokey. I was loving him, he's going through all something, my hands were playing Smokey. Hey, are you available? Last week I called and said, yeah, I want to learn about playing Smokey.
You got a ball?
Yeah, and that's her. Working with Department Environmental Services, Exit 18 Gas Station is workers starting there. Not quite sure what the extent of it should be, but they are spending a lot of money to replace the tanks and put new pumps in, so something must be opening up there, basically that's all.
We are in discussions with the owners of the facility.
Okay, okay.
They're on hold right now.
Yeah, oh, they're on hold?
All the permits are now.
Yeah, yeah, but DES permits aren't in place.
The DES permit's in place, but town permits not.
Okay, town permits, alright. Fire Prevention Week, we're planning that, I've already been in touch with, the school has actually been in touch with us. We always do one day demos for three different groups, first grade, second grade, and third and fourth grade, they get to the station for an hour, that's all locked in for October. And I'm working with the people up in Harmony Lane because South Harmony Lane access is gonna be accessed from the north for a three, four week period, once it starts to cover construction. So, I have to be in contact, excuse me, about my fire, which is gonna beat us there, and Marvin Fire as well, and make sure that dispatch has all the information for when we go up there, need to go up there, so. And then we got met with them later that night, we had a medical call on North Harmony Lane. There's two houses in Canterbury and North Harmony Lane, and we had a medical call. I just wanted to go into the subject now, I'm not asking for permission, I'm just more mainly asking for direction. R-S-U One is a 2008, it's soon to become a money pit, needs some rust repair. There's been some frame issues, leaf spring issues. In that line, I believe, I wanna repurpose that vehicle, meaning that, in discussions with my deputies and my officers, the vehicle was built for a certain objective, and since then it's been downgraded to meet that objective, well, we don't need as much of the vehicle. So, I've been looking at different options, talking to different vendors for different types of vehicles, looking for ideas, but, and that line right now is about 150. As of December 31st, it was 153,218 in the cap reserve account. And we put, I'm sorry, it was 141,000, and this year we put 12,000, so it's 153,000. So, just looking for direction, if you think it may be, you want me to try to let that thing last, make it last four or five more years, that's all we're gonna do. Realistically, it's a, it's a, it's a, soon to be a 17-year-old vehicle, that's basically our primary vehicle out the door for routine medical calls and stuff like that. So, if we think it's maybe more in a two-year window, I'll defer the rust repairs or defer that stuff, you know, but it's soon to become a kind of money pit, that I should be able to handle in my budget, okay? But, I don't need an answer right now, but something maybe we, you know, you can be talking about that give me some direction on, what's the timeframe, year and a half, or we wanna push that out five years?
Do you wanna talk about what?
Yeah, so, it's gonna be, when we change, it's gonna be a vehicle similar to mine, maybe a little bit beefier, an F-250 type of deal, extended cab, and just compartmentation for the medical equipment, and our routine detection equipment, and SCVAs and stuff like that. So, it's gonna be a regular, everyday inspection vehicle, medical vehicle, and stuff like that, so. Doesn't have to have dual tires, and the current one has the automatic oil drive and all that stuff. So, what I'm looking to replace it at, they just, the people that I talked with delivered one exactly the way we wanted last month, for all strike, everything's super nuts, is 175. So, we're close on that, on that line that we have, you know, at today's dollars. Who knows what, you know, a year or two went down, so it's not urgent, the thing's still gonna run next month, next year, but I just wanna gauge on how much money I'm gonna sink into that to keep it running, based on what our, what our projected future is.
Well, you would know best how that's used, and if it's still reliable.
Oh, so that thing has to be ready to go 365 days a year? We don't go up 365 days a year, but it always has to be ready?
Yeah.
And a 16-year-old vehicle, I think it's good to run around town, that's the deal, but to say that it's gonna, like our engine free, right, it's gonna work every time it's called upon? I'm not 100% certain. Right, so, we're maintaining it, we're, you know, we're inspecting it, we're, you know, it's just, I think within a year, 18-month period, it's gonna start requiring some significant, well, I don't really need some rust repair. We did a rust repair three years ago on it, and on one side, the other side's kinda rotting away, and there's been some frame, leaf spring issues, so, you know, depending on how deep I go, how much money I invest in that, it's gonna be kind of the one, the direction I do.
Well, part of it would be, you know, it seems like anything, if you wanted this new vehicle and you placed the order, how long before it comes?
So, these vehicles aren't lasting as long as fire trucks, they told me it's well under a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well under a year, so.
Not like the grader, which seems to have been taken forever to get here and get put together.
I'm sure we'll hear about that from John, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, certainly, I think in, maybe we can get through the next two years.
At least.
Yeah.
I think we should be thinking about aluminum truck too, say, it's the rusting that's the problem on the truck.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, you know, again, it's a 16-year-old vehicle that, you know, that goes out in all kinds of weather, you know, especially snow, it's always out in the snow when it's snowing, on the highway and stuff like that, so.
When's the best time to decide, should we come, does this come up again during the full budget process?
So, when we, I thought, I talked to the chief today, and I thought this was an appropriate conversation to have tonight, because we're meeting with the Budget Committee in September, and we won't see the chief again before we meet with them.
Yeah.
So, you know, these are things that we like to put on the horizon of the Budget Committee, just to let them know what's going on, and this might be coming down in a year or so, so.
So, you said we have 153 in the cap reserve for this Rescue One vehicle?
It's 153,000, and then now we put 12,000 a year, we've been putting 12,000 a year in it. So, in 2025, we have 165,000.
A 10 grand short.
Yeah, in today's dollars.
If anyone were 75. In today's dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's a good thing to think about with budget time. Alrighty, but at the moment, it's?
It's fine.
Okay. Alright, good, thank you.
I just wanted to plant the seed, and, you know, and then have maybe some further discussions down the road.
Good time to do.
Okay, thank you.
Our radio installation project of the grants we received from FEMA last year, that $80,000, that's, that project is going right now as we speak, all the radios and the fire trucks have been replaced, the work on portals, the antenna, the stuff in the station, so I anticipate by mid-February we'll be all done with that, with that project. And now we've come to the current grant that I was pleasantly surprised to be awarded, well, offered to be awarded last week, the total of 24,000 plus. It's, that requires a 5% match, so if I spend the entire 24,000, the match is about 500, that would come out of my budget, I could absorb that match from my budget for that thing. I just wanna, you know, this is needed equipment, this is, this is not equipment that's nice to have, this is equipment that we have to buy for the fire truck.
What is this?
Excuse me?
What are we buying?
Hose, novels, and stuff like that, because stuff is coming off into three, some of it's close to 30 years old. It's really, you know, it's not reliable.
This is for the new truck?
This is for the new truck, this is for the old, new truck, yes. So, pleasantly surprised to be, be offered that, we'd be able to put all the hose and also on this fire truck that, you know, for basically pennies on the dollar. And I was really hoping that we'd get, so a lot of work was put into this, and I did acknowledge the efforts of Ken and his staff, Callan, Mary, it seems like anytime when he had a question or needed something, they'd drop it there, do it again, and help me out, so, thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, I'm looking for permission to go accept that.
Oh. Why would we say no?
Close the?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we've been, we've been open for 10 minutes, so. Does anybody wanna speak on the assistance to firefighter grant? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And we need a motion to accept, so I'll make a motion that we accept the assistance to firefighter grant funds from FEMA in the amount of 24,376.19. Okay, for a second?
And a second.
I bet, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll formally accept that tomorrow.
Great.
In the last two bullets, Conqueror Hospital, we are now fully under agreement to operate control substances out of our fire truck, and as soon as that gets done, we'll work on a few logistics things as far as security and inventory, probably by the, right around the end of the month, that will be offering from Harbors on, in Wisconsin, the paramedic level service of people who live and come to our town, so that's, that's really good. And lastly, it's the exercise area that we also share inside the, inside the fire bay, we received a donation from Planet Fitness Corporate, a $5,000 machine, brand new machine, a couple of months ago, I wrote them a letter, and I've been working on that on the side for a little bit, so, I'm trying to get them to, get them to, to, so, yeah, yeah, so.
Great.
Great. That's it, any questions?
Thanks, chief.
I don't think so, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Do you mind if I sneak out for half a second, this is binging, there's an emergency waiting for me?
Okay.
For one minute, to just find out how emergency this is.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, we've got it for him, so.
Alright, so, from last month, we've had 17 incidents or accidents, five arrests, 24 citations, 639 calls for service, and state police assisted us with 24 calls for service. Deanna completed her nurse training, which is working on the IMC program, system we use for our reports.
Yeah.
School starts back up September 3rd, and we have a drug takeback day scheduled for Saturday on October 26th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, weekly. And I've been gone for the last two neck weeks, so.
Lucky you.
I was working, I was with the army.
I was gonna say, I thought you were in a better place, though, I'm guessing not.
This call for service, this is almost the same as last month, wasn't it, also like 600 last month?
Yeah, they're, they usually work around the same in the summer. The citations are a lot lower, you know, it's just been tied up with more major incidents, which keeps them working on reports and other things, so they haven't been on the road as much in the past month, so.
Anything new or different about the incidents or accidents there?
No, I mean, no, they're about the same as they usually are.
And do we need to, is there advertising to, around drug take back?
I'm trying to get my hands on some signs that we can put up, we usually keep them in the paper going until we can change the dates, but they usually send us newer signs every time that the EAs come out, so I just gotta wait for them to send them out.
And you do this to the, like, the town newsletter and all the regular?
We usually put it on our Facebook page, we'll put the signs down at the library and at the store.
Okay, if you, if you send the informa, if the, if the information is emailable, if you wanna email it to me, I can get it in the town newsletter and the town email, and just put it to the regular of it.
I can do that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, director, sorry, this is a call, phone is off, emergency is non-emergent.
Hello, hold up.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Could I ask you, did that unearies?
Ask them.
Yes, thank you. Hello.
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 My board of trustees do not meet in August, so I don't have the time to report. I just wanted to confirm that I had a conversation with Ken about the pavement, so I think we're still slated for the paving law this month.
You can get back to me.
Okay.
We're waiting on the paving company.
Okay.
So long as the paving company doesn't do it on a Wednesday, that's fine.
Exactly.
Please know how Wednesday is.
So, I figured that will happen probably, if it doesn't, but that's what I told Phil Adams with the, the gas stuff, there. Haven't heard back on the, the work on the Historical Society, I know. And I hate to break that up, and I left a message too, but I don't know if he's waiting for Joel, I don't know if he's waiting for you, but that's a long time to come.
Yeah, he was waiting for weather, if that was a string of the board concrete.
Rachel, so that was the, that was two years old, actually, that was the Historical Society
door swings out, I suppose, to stop. And there's a lot of flooding and lots of creatures that come through under the door. And we had gotten two or three bids of replacing that door, which was incredibly expensive. And then Joel came up, and Ken came up with the great idea of like a little eyebrow, so the water would go off of the back, and then we could keep the door, and, and that was Berwick, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Construction, and he was waiting for the frost to melt.
Is it melted?
I think by now, yes, okay.
They've got some.
Okay.
I think we can put a couple of sawtooths in there, so, anyway, so I followed up with them, didn't hear, no response, so, I just wanted to throw that out. And, as I said, my trustees don't meet in August, I'll be presenting my budget to them in September, and they will present it to you in October, I'll have that off on that.
Great, thank you.
No?
I don't think so, everything well in library land?
Wonderful.
Good, always good to know.
It's a beautiful gig if you can get it.
Okay.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
Rachel. Charlie.
Yes, no, I didn't get back to me, I did ask for August, mess up on Ayers Road and extend, what Meachy's doing there, they may have just pushed everything back. My stuff's ready for them to come in any time.
So, they're working on Ayers Road now?
No.
Oh, not yet.
And, yeah, speaking of frost, we're putting the wing on the grader today.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we, we need it to go.
Okay. It is still August, right, I'm just checking.
Really?
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Didn't contact Jeff Slade, I haven't heard back.
Yeah, that's, that's my.
Cat deal with the, the new grader.
Oh.
Instead of an email today, and I, he said he was gonna chat, so that was the last thing I had to do.
Is there any obligation on their part to get it to us in, like, a reasonable timeframe, whatever that might mean, I mean, it could, interesting.
There's nothing in the contracts of anything, won't deliver, delivery data or anything like that.
Last we heard is, it was supposed to hit port.
It was coming off the ship, when was it?
The 12th of July?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Coming off the ship the 12th of July. And that was being sent up to one of the, for.
Right.
Yeah. So, things happened at the dump, as you're well aware, we've now changed our policies concerning money there, and it seems to be working, and I added a little time to Dave's Florida's extra running.
Yeah.
Any complaints about that, from anybody trying to bring debris or construction stuff? The new policy, anybody got any?
No.
Okay, good.
No. I, I thought it was taking effect September 1st, but I guess it got implemented already.
Yeah.
And Dave hasn't mentioned it either. Speaking of snow, Ben will be back to help us this one.
Good.
So, we have two.
Did it include Dave, or?
No.
No.
Do I know Ben's last name?
Ben Davis.
Oh, Ben Davis.
Yeah, he's worked part-time.
Yeah, he comes in, just, just called for snow, and stays for the storm, then takes off. He's twisting someone else's arm somewhat, to be mentioned, not during the meeting, but, we'll see. And I don't know if you wanna start trying to advertise for a truck, privates, or considering it?
John and I had a discussion about plow roses, which are the staffing shortages at the Highway Department.
Yeah.
It may be to our advantage, at this point, particularly now, is to advertise the hire for a truck and driver, by time, you know. The state does the same thing, they hire trucks and drivers. Sometimes it may be easier to find somebody that's willing to use their truck and their plow and have them at an hourly rate versus trying to hire somebody who uses our equipment. They're more familiar with their equipment, and might be easier to do that, so. John and I talked about that, and thought that might be something, we might want at least, at least investigate and see if we get any responses.
Why wouldn't we, yeah, especially?
I have zero confidence, but state last year needed 367 trucks, they only got 268.
Yeah. John, what would you think would be a fare for a truck and driver per hour rate?
You're Googling, and, and they're talking municipalities, we're paying 115, 150 an hour. A tandem truck, just truck, is getting 125 right now, or more. The triaxals are heavier, and now you're adding plows, sanders, you know, the extra gear, and hazardous driving because of the weather, are, they're not coming out for cheap, for short money.
Yeah, so you're thinking 115, 125?
That's what the internet was, was telling me, that municipalities are paying. State of New Hampshire was paying 126 an hour for our size truck. Give you an idea, Massachusetts was paying 231, and that was for the 23, 24 seasons.
And they still couldn't get enough people?
Ooh.
Wow.
Well, plus they incorporate, I believe, last year was the second year, they got 10 hours of time every two weeks, if it snowed or not snowed. I'm not sure where that timeframe starts, but it's fairly early, because they want the.
Oh, as an incentive, so they would pay them a certain number of hours regardless?
It's a stipend to put the iron on the truck, ready to go.
Uh, well, that's something to put in the budget, for sure. How does that, do we?
That adds up pretty quick.
Do we have any idea how that compares to if we happen to have a, a person running our own trucks? What's that goes, that would reduce down to?
We were paying 35 last year.
But I'm assuming this 126 includes the truck time, and the wear and the tear, and the whole nine yards? But there's, is there a good way to compare? Okay, I didn't, I would've been surprised if it was, but, alright, wow.
So, season's coming?
It seems like it would be prudent to at least start looking, because we're not getting the Highway Department any faster, so.
And it was Bowden's last day today, so no more mowing.
Oh.
Unless it's done by Dave, Dave or I.
Okay.
Just add to my list of things.
They did a good job.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, we're putting something on town email, seeing if anybody's interested for the next couple of months, but, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Ken, what are your thoughts on?
Yeah, I, I think we haven't been successful, we haven't received any new applications for highway. We've been, I've been talking with other municipal managers, it's the same thing all over, nobody can hire anybody. I, I think at this point, we have to do something, and this would be the, at least a way to at least figure out if we can get any responses, so.
Makes sense to me.
I, I would say, yeah. What, what's the, you know, at some point, if all the municipalities are up against not being able to find anybody, at what point do the municipalities gather together and make, be able to throw a lot more in the pot and? Is that, is that what a compact would, would work?
So, we, we are, members of the, the state has a, has a mutual aid system for highway departments.
Yeah.
And we are part of that, it's typically only for emergencies, if there's a big storm, or your garage burned down, or you, something happened to your vehicles, if you need to borrow some vehicles or something like that, it usually isn't for regular day-to-day, you know, week-to-week maintenance and, and regular road maintenance and things like that. I don't know, at some point, I think my, my thought would be to contact our state reps and see, because they, they work on a more regional basis, I think it would be difficult for the towns to, I don't know, that might be a, a way to start, anyway, to get the conversation going with different municipalities.
Because it seems like it may not be a, a classic emergency, you know, somebody's one garage, but yeah, but there's an emergency shortage of bodies throughout all the municipalities that we gotta deal with.
You, you, yeah, and it, and it's not just, obviously, it's not just the Highway Department.
No.
I saw in the paper that the state police have 60 vacancies, you know, it's, they're, all, all, all municipalities are struggling to find people anymore, right now. For, for all positions.
Yeah, one would hope if at least enough municipalities got together to be able to make a better deal, whatever that deal is, is it housing, is it incentives, is it whatever, to share, you know? Mayor Matt County have all the highway departments and the, all the people in the, in the, in the middle and send them out.
We're not part of, that's the kind of country that we work on county-wide services.
Yeah.
So, and it seems to work in some places, so, I don't know what to say, but.
I, I don't even know.
I've never seen it like this, never.
No, but it, here it is.
Lot across the boards.
Yeah. So, I don't know at what point it would be, you know, be worth our while to look at a countywide type thing, but if all of us are having, I mean, what happens if in the middle of the storm, we can't get plowed because we don't have enough warm bodies, what do we do? I mean, we stay home, but still.
Pretty much.
That's a conversation for another day, I, I know, but, it's, yeah, I would say looking for people to hire to do the roads in the winter, what else are we gonna do?
Because right now, you've got five routes and two drivers. So, it takes a while to make those rounds.
You can be thinking about this in August, but I think that's.
Bloody is.
Great.
Yeah.
It's no blood, five routes, two drivers?
Yeah. Ken, any thoughts from you?
Same thing as your guys talked about, I, I think we ought to be looking at other contractors, like, I've suggested several times, we talked to Dougie Nelson, he's got trucks down there, he says he's got drivers, so, I don't know what the problem would be talking to, find out what his pricing is, have you ever worked with him, or?
No, but he's usually hired out to the state.
No, but he told me that he had a truck, so. I don't know. Have we ever used private pickup truck type things, just to get the basic road cleared out, and then?
Not in the past.
I mean, there's lots of guys with their own trucks, is that gonna be a problem with commercial insurances and stuff like that, if we did that, or?
Yeah.
Could somebody's little private pickup truck do a big, the main road?
They can, they do that up north, where they get those two, three-inch guts every day, that, they'll. They'll they'll go around and hit them with a pickup truck and at some point they'll go around and blow it back with a heavier truck. I know that's how Guilford does their acre, the acres, unsloake acres of my ski area.
Yeah.
Just just to get the road open. They're a little quicker and certainly not plowing as wide.
So can we, can we? Maybe so that, or as you say with insurance?
I think. First step would be advertise to see if we can, see if there's trucks and drivers, drivers and trucks out there.
Commercial trucks and drivers.
Trucks and drivers. See if we do, see if we'll get any responses.
Okay, and Dougie Nelson is 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 he a commercial? I don't know, is he a commercial guy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good, sounds good. While we're on the subject of roads, um I talked to Argos last week, asked him to call me by today. Hadn't heard from him, so I contacted the contractor direct.
Yeah.
Very reasonable, um he's gonna call me by next Wednesday and have a time set up to meet with John and go out and take a look at all the other roads and come up with a plan.
And who who is that, Kent?
Uh, I don't have the guy's name in front of me. Mike something.
We've got the, we've got the.
Mike Rislav.
Yeah.
Mike Rislav.
Okay.
We've done an invitation from somebody to talk to him about plowing and other things, right, grating and that stuff, did we can we pursue that too and see what they would cost to have them do it or?
So that was the the guy from Boston that was offering, he had a grater, was offering to talk to different towns about per hour rate. I haven't contacted him. About about is that, are you talking about like the whole project or what?
Yeah, that's if he's interested, it sounded like he would be interested in those type of things, right?
I, he was, he was more interested in like a an annual contract to maintain the dirt roads.
Yeah.
Didn't sound like he was, he did have some project places in here. Hundred and sixty dollars an hour. But he's got a grater, it sounds like that's all he has is a grater. But I know the other guy was talking about having come over the wheel excavator and do the ditch lines and things like that. I can call him and see if he's interested in coming out and taking a look at the roads.
He's the only one that's asked us for the work, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, he sent us out to all the municipalities in the area.
Well, if he, if he's got the, if he's got the equipment and the tools to do it, yeah. But Mike Rislav will call us back by Wednesday, he said?
That's what he said, yeah.
All right. Gonna come out and look at everything.
And I'll be working out of town September ninth to the fourth. Which incorporates your election time.
Gotcha.
Set up, I've already talked to Sam that these wrangling bodies, try and take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are you all, are you good?
I don't think so.
Thanks, John.
How goes it otherwise? How goes it otherwise in general?
I'd say.
Yeah, okay, good. Best we can hope for.
Kathy is here. That's what I was gonna say. The waiver? Yeah. So we have a copy of the waiver. So it's just that one, it's that first one. Just this, yeah. 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 And that has the revised uh upgrade agreement attached to it, as well as the letter from it's from you guys, I drafted it, showed it to Joel about the zoning issue with the two lots, that little lot. Yeah. So that letter is in there that that says it is a go of the lot. Right, which is this one, correct? Correct, that's. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Does anybody wanna look at this before?
Yes, please, I just wanna look at that one, that, his letter, is this Joel's letter?
I understand, yeah. Yes, that's it, yeah.
Okay. And then we didn't get, you didn't get chief to put his okay on here, okay, check, miss my little bit.
I think we got it for a golden.
Well, I think we did. So we're set to sign?
I believe so, right?
You're all set to sign it?
Yeah.
Set to sign.
And there's three, three places for three signatures on that? No, I'm over the screen. A letter, the road agreement. Well, it's just two pieces of sign, but there's three places of sign.
Oh, for each person.
I understand, okay.
I I follow.
Yeah, there's little sticky notes on that front one and then on the back one.
I love those little sticky notes.
And is there anything else road permit wise we're set? Right, all set. Yeah. This should do it. Just two, you said. That's it, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, it disappeared.
Are you guys open tomorrow?
I'll be there tomorrow, um.
Because if you want, I can either take this one, run it to the house, have them sign it and bring it back, or I could just stop by tomorrow.
No, I wanna hang on to the original, but if you, um, I should be in tomorrow from at least nine to we get two, so the door might be locked, but you can just knock or email me or call.
Okay, you'll probably come around nine, then you're up in there.
Okay. Have we heard anything further from attorney Manzelli or anyone? We the, we did have, no? Um, just so.
Thousand won the, like, an old stock, yeah.
Write-in number request, um, Kathy sent me a message that I can pause, um, one of the write-in number requests and I'm pretty much done with the other one.
Okay.
Um, and the material I'm looking through applies to both, so if I find anything while finishing the other one, then I'll send it to everybody.
Okay.
So I just signed twice, is that? Yeah, that's it. All right. That is the only thing that she has to take to get signed.
Yes, well, um.
It's up to you.
Can you come in to sign it? Because then I don't have to part with the original that gives everybody's.
Yeah, I'm planning for the, um, well, does everyone home and see if you can, if you're gonna be here for a little bit?
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
I'll go check with him.
That would mean from baby sand duty.
Of course, yeah.
We're tag teaming this deal.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, brother, I appreciate you, all you've done.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the yellow one, yes, yeah. How about I'll give you everything?
Thank you. I'll give this over to you so she comes in.
All right, so that takes care of there. All right, so we're there to do some signing, seems like. Yeah. All right, four people start arriving, new appointments. All right, first item will be the accounts payable manifest in the amount of eighteen thousand forty-eight dollars and eight cents.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, next is a uh payroll manifest in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
And seconded.
All those in favor, all right?
Aye. Thank you for the tour of the manifest this morning, Kathy. I feel much better about signing things now.
Yeah, if anybody else wants a folder of what's in that package, just stop by and.
Cool, thank you, what time are you in?
Yes, tomorrow morning, I'll be in at nine.
Yeah. Okay. I want to see tomorrow morning, but I'll see you at ten point soon with that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, you want that as well?
You could also drop it off, drop off the copy in the in the drop box outside, you know, it's for Sam, we all kinda.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Understood, yeah, I get you. Um, all right, so the notice of intent to cut water timber, map two six zero lot two. That's Douglas Road off West Road, and that we just signed, right?
Correct.
Douglas Road.
Where is this?
Douglas Road off West Road.
I don't have to, I don't have to look, look down, I don't think I've ever heard of that.
Yeah.
I've never heard of Douglas Road.
Yeah, that's funny, is it a new road that we don't know about? That would be scary.
Hard question.
That's what it says, I gotta look it up, you looking it up?
Yeah.
All right. I'll talk, John, is there any bells with you?
Might be the service road that runs across the ridge.
Yeah, it's possible.
Or the one that runs down behind the Doug Nelson's father's old place.
That's Sand Hill Road.
That, yeah, I know, that's Sand Hill, but there's another one on the other side of Willie.
What's the?
There's a bad house there, I don't know how they get to.
Um, do service roads get names? Thank you. Um, the last name is, it says Stephen Giles Trustee.
Oh, or it's drip.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, so that is uh that is, I I don't know why it's Douglas Road. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So that is the long driveway, the long driveway that goes over that Oh, that again, yeah. By Cochran's sand pit that goes all the way down along the river. Yeah. And that's the access to the Giles property where I hate to bring it back up. I know, I don't tend to, I saw it in the manager's. It was, it was a fire down there.
Yes. It was an unfortunate fire, uh, oh wait, I didn't sign.
Kent? You're welcome. Although I don't know that we have much more to sign. Um, no.
I guess the taxi's out to West Road.
Thanks.
All right, well, for now, you're right, that's a trip, so it might.
Yeah, so Kent, hold on to that one, please.
Okay.
All right, so that brings us to security alarm policy. Yes. Um, this is, I have it right here, okay, so security alarm passcode policy, basically it says that uh alarm passcodes start to be maintained for all town buildings, the alarm system shares its security. Individual passcode should be issued to the authorized personnel only. Any personnel receive passcodes, advise not to share their code, and when an employee leaves employment, their passcode shall be deleted. If the alarm system is not capable of individual codes, the master code shall be changed and authorized users will be notified. That was a policy that I guess needed to be done, understood.
Does that apply to the town hall?
No, not the town hall, just the, just the uh transfer station, Sam Lake House and the police station that has a security portion brought up.
Um, does it matter that this has all town buildings if it doesn't include the town hall?
Yeah, we probably should relearn that.
I don't, I don't, if it matters in the policy, then, yeah.
Policy, yes. Okay.
But that's a good policy.
Yeah, it definitely is something we need. All right.
Oh, can I, can I pause for a moment here, um, talking about alarms? When you changed it over so that I'm the contact person for, um, whatever the secure of whoever. Um, it didn't, it lists, it didn't list the town offices as being on ten.
That's a different company.
Oh.
It's a different company.
That's why, okay. Got it, because I was like, I thought we were at Ten Hackleboro or whatever the Hackleboro, but it didn't have a Hackleboro address.
No, it's a different, different company, yes.
Oh, okay, got it.
All right, so we are at the previous minutes approval, August fifth, twenty twenty-four public um portion.
Uh, yes, I don't believe I had any change, I thought I emailed you those, Kathy, but what I emailed you was a comment on something that we talked about in that meeting, but not anything about the minutes. So I don't believe I had any.
I've got nothing in the mood of corrections.
I'm all set, okay.
No, I I didn't have anything either.
Okay, nothing for an option, so move.
These were good. And seconded.
All those in favor, aye?
Um, I do have a question now that, not not to change the minutes, but it's something that we did, I was just did we make a uh, an offer to the individual about the payback for tuition and have we heard back?
We have not heard back. All right, so it looks like we've got, our first appointment is coming at six, right? Mm-hmm. Do you wanna talk about solar panels? Sure. Just sent you guys some pictures, there was a tree came down, solar panels up the missile building. Um, just later came out to look, he found some solar panels down in Massachusetts. Uh, fifty dollars each, he bought two, he only needed one, but he bought two. He installed them with our Kirby bachelor's help this weekend, so they're all back up and running. Total cost was less than five hundred dollars.
Great.
Um, we're gonna take a look at all the trees out there and see if we need to to do anything else, okay.
Hundred dollars for two panels is a good deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So did he install, is the second one just waiting in case something else happens?
It's a stair in case something happens. He figured that the uh, the the panels are old enough, they're obsolete. Um, he found these, there's a gentleman had, I don't know, twenty of them down in Massachusetts and kind of talked about, kind of talked about whether they're coming to buy and uh, figured out two would be, you know, one would replace the damage in their house, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. And one more on the new business, I forgot to mention when we were talking about the transfer station. It was a hundred dollars for the last, you know, the door that got built into up there.
Yeah.
So we've got that. And the only other thing on the new business is I am gonna be taking a couple days off in September the fourth and the fifth. That's the week of Labor Day.
Yeah.
That's right, after Labor Day, or, I got Tuesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. Just rented that time for. Sounds good. Jeff is here. Jeff, you waiting for anybody else or just you?
Uh, I think it's fifteen.
Why don't you come on down, let's uh.
Come on down.
Yeah, you're the next contestant.
Awesome. Uh, all right. I don't know, I know Kent is very familiar with 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 about, I'll give you a quick what I'm here about. So we're doing the window dressers program here in town.
Yeah.
I I looked at about fifteen houses, I've measured at this point. And so the idea is you. Um, and so the idea is you install one of these thermal inserts and I can. This up close, you see it? That's a mini window.
Yeah.
There's been sized windows. The idea is to create a thermal barrier, uh, to help energy efficiency of the room. Uh, they're built, they're measured directly to every window, uh, to a hundredth of an inch. Um, and so, uh, early on, it was suggested that maybe the town hall would be a, a candidate. For this, one, a good show of faith to the town, and two, it is hopefully a money saver ultimately for, uh, the building. Um, so I went in there and spent some time measuring just to get a sample, I didn't do all. Um, of them to get an idea of what I was up against. And so first off, some things, and I can forward this email if you want more details. Um, they're literally charged by the square inch.
Okay.
So. I worked up, you know, all the windows are all nominally the same. Literally, I had found like by the penny, it'll vary a little bit from window to window. Um, so, uh, in your main room, there was ten windows around the exterior. Um, you have a choice, so the thing, you can either do white or pine. So on one side of that thing's white, uh, and on the other side is a, is a pine. A little bit of an upcharge for the white. Over the pine. Uh, non, so nominal pricing, um, is about fifty-six dollars per window on the pine. To give you an idea of the upcharge, about seventy, it goes up to seventy-three dollars per, if you want the white finish. So that percentage rises, significant matters.
Yeah.
Uh, to go with the white. So that takes you around five hundred and sixty bucks to seven hundred and thirty bucks for the ten windows, okay? Um, before I get into the rest of it, though, I, the reason why I didn't continue to measure everybody. Um, you can see that the frame is built out of three quarter inch finished, uh, wood, dimensional wood, so it's pretty exact three quarter inch. So you need on the sill, you know, the side panel, you need, the recommendation is at least seven eighths of an inch. Get yourself an eighth inch clearance from the three quarter, if you butt it all the way up against the window, you not only have about an eighth inch clearance. Right now, those windows all have, not all on a town like this tile, of window shades, uh, in all the windows over there in the town hall with insufficient clearance.
Hmm.
So. I'm tr, I personally trying to stay out of the window modification business.
Which means that you, if you butted it up against the window shades, it wouldn't fit, is that what you're saying?
There's, and between the window and the shade, there's insufficient clearance. Most people are gonna wanna put, keep the shade to the inside, so you, if you want, if the shades are there for a reason for sun blockage and darkened room. Yeah, if I do the other way, if I put the insert to the outside, your shade is being unusual, so most people wanna put it to the inside. Um, and so. The short answer is, one, you, uh, the shades need to be moved out. Some windows you can uninstall a bracket, pop it out, a quarter inch, whatever the case may be, and put it back in, and you got sufficient clearance. Um, maybe there's a different style blind you could go to, I'll be honest, they're a little old and kind of don't feel good.
Those blinds are pretty pretty in there, aren't they?
They are.
Okay. I mean, they.
So that might, you know, maybe go by a different style.
When, when you look at, you know, when I was looking at them during the book sale, trying to put them up and down for, you know, they're.
Yeah, so that has to be resolved, I mean, I don't want to, you know, I can give you a date estimate and everything, but I don't wanna place order unless we have resolution on what we wanna do with the blinds.
Right.
Um, and with all that said, so the, that's one issue I definitely know has to be resolved.
Yeah.
Um, and how we handle that.
Jeff, just so I understand it, there is sufficient depth to do the insert and then a blind on the inside of that, right?
Uh, blind on the ins? To the inside of the building.
To the inside of that insert.
I think there, well, depends on the, I didn't say it that far.
Okay.
Um. How much room, some windows, like, I'm looking at that one right there, there's so much sill depth there. Even if it was really close, you just move it out a little bit, reattach it, and you're done.
I'm just thinking of bathrooms where privacy is, is a factor.
Okay, well, the ten that I've talked about, those are not the bathroom, I have a separate thing.
Well, the bathroom is the newest part of the addition with new insulated.
I did, I did spec those and estimated those, I did the hallway and the bathroom kitchen.
Yeah.
But being the newest ones, I thought if there's, if you wanted to try anything, I would be attacked in the main room.
So we actually have, I think there's thirteen in the main hall.
Uh, there's ten in the main room, and then there's two in that storage off the left, there's two in there, so there's twelve.
And there's twelve, there's two more in front of the building, right, there's five on each side?
No, I, I counted ten, I don't know. In my notes, I got ten, I'm thinking on again. Can you see different? I started with the wrong side.
Yeah, there's five on each.
Really? Did I miss the two on the one? All right.
I think there's thirteen tools.
Well, I mean, in the end, I'd still work you up a full list. Um, okay, I might be off.
I mean, we, we, actually, when we did the work over there, we insulated the walls, I had a floor at that time, and I had the ceiling floor, so the. Last holes that we got in the building are the windows.
Yeah.
And my theory on it is, do what you want with it, but. The windows need to be worked on in the town halls, it is, they're a mess. And I think trying to get them changed into something like this or any other side is gonna be tough. And I don't wanna fight it, but I am willing to suggest that we put these certs, inserts in, and then over the next year, we take two or three or four a year. And there's a guy over in Warner that will actually clean them up, re-glaze them, paint them. And then we hire somebody in town to ins, install them with fresh weather stripping. And maybe consider just leaving these on permanently.
Yeah.
Uh, they're not really recommended for a year round install, just say a full window dresser, because, um.
We got both a problem of heating in there and cooling.
Yeah, in theory, they should give a benefit in the cooling as well, I mean, it's a thermal barrier, whether it's going in or out, it's still a barrier.
Yeah.
Um, but.
There's still single pane windows, and single pane windows will sweat in the winter, if you put any amount of heat there, so.
But if you have them fixed by the guy in Warner and re-glazed and everything, will they function then to go up to let air in?
They would, they would, it's just that, um, I think what we're gonna end up doing in the end, we might guess, if we're gonna heat that thing with electric, we're gonna heat it with a heat pump. Same as we do all these, you don't need to take windows out or put them in or open them or anything. Now, maybe we'll find what we want to, but I don't think we're going to do.
Oh, right, but that's for the heating part of things, but in the summer, when we wanna.
And cool. And cool.
Oh, and.
He's saying.
Just keep them cool all the time.
The mini splits work best as letting them rip.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm going, that's what I'm doing, thanks.
So they do best, it's around.
I think if we approach it that way, if we decide we wanna be able to use them, then we make them so they'll open.
Right, yeah, I understand. So Jeff, the recommendation, just so clear, is that those go within the fall, right?
Uh, they're, the build is, uh, November seventh to the thirteenth is the build, so we haven't been timed to get them in for next winter or eighteen.
But do they need to come out in the spring?
That's window dresser general recommendation is not a big problem. Nothing says it change.
Wonder why?
There may be, do these things degrade of sunlight over time, or?
They do.
They may be what they're worried about.
Might be more about.
Because if you listen to the window dresser shield, they're saying, no, people leave them in and they help cool it and blah, 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 but if it's not recommended.
I've been, yeah, that's fine, the training I've been through, they live near, but no.
Um, and where would they be stored and have?
So that's a, a discussion point, well, I imagine that room's the, the most natural place to be, the basements are fine. Uh, you don't want untreated attic that's too hot out of basement. You know, I would put them on some type of, uh, something to get them off, that probably the floor might be a damn, gonna make sure they're not sitting on direct contact with the floor. But standing vertically is fine for them, you can stack them, but they recommend putting, uh, you know, a piece of cardboard in between each one, a little protection, but they stand vertically, no problem. Or even the storage room, but that's, a lot of people are moving things in and out, you gotta protect.
Well, and that's pretty full with chairs and things, people moving, pointing things in and out.
So, uh, with all that said, there's one other condition. Cause I've measured a few old farmhouse's now, there's not a guarantee, you know, these are kind of lower budget inserts. And we're not gonna custom make to every single opening, so I need to have, I have about a quarter inch tolerance. So basically, it comes down to squareness of your window, and that's one of the things, as I'm measuring, I'll evaluate the squareness of the window, make sure it fits, if it's, if I get more than a quarter inch out. I'm not gonna try to put an insert in that window, so. I, I put that collar down on here, I have not checked all the windows in a building that's been moved like something like five times around the south side over its lifetime.
Seems like that would be a good thing to know, you can only put inserts in like half the windows, does that help?
Uh, is it, it, there is help, but it's, yeah, you still.
Is it, is it worth it at that point, yeah?
So, um. Best I'm a steel, uh, the hallway, bath, kitchen, again, those are the ones I, you know. I know those would fit, and they're fine, they're newly framed windows and that's not on anything. They were like fifteen, forty bucks, so, those, those are a little smaller, a little cheaper.
Yeah.
Um, but I think the, the biggest issue is what you wanna do about the blinds, if, if you wanna proceed.
I would think we should, you look at the blinds, see if they are worth saving, and if they're not, we'd have to, I mean, we're gonna have to come up with a price for all of this, right? It would be seven hundred, if we, you know, again, I guess we'd have to check with, we have to check with HDC to see if they want pine versus white. Uh, say we go with seven hundred and thirty, I don't know how much it is to put blinds, there are four thermal curtains in there or whatever. Um, cause that, that's a, on top of that price, and what's in the, what's in the budget for dealing with the town hall window issue?
Then I think the other question.
Thousand, two grand, easily twenty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, I think the other question to need to answer is how many windows are square enough to permit this?
I can answer that in one, Ken.
Yeah.
Go on, I can add very quickly.
Yeah.
So if we have windows and then. Do we have to look at the whole project and see what it would be for your guy in Warner, Webster, wherever you said to do windows?
I don't think that for this part of it to move forward, we need anything from those at this point.
Sounds like, yeah, he, they reconditioned the window, but the actual frame itself would not be touched again at all.
So even if the windows are reconditioned, we'd still use these window, uh, dress inserts to keep the heat in, okay?
Uh, I will say, so I have a cutoff date of October fourth. Uh, I have to be ordered and paid for, uh, if it's gonna get built, so.
That's a very short timeline, when's our next meeting after this?
Uh, September ninth, from the budget committee.
Yeah.
And on the twenty-third.
What budget does, would this even come out of?
There is no budget for maintenance of the town hall, we have a heating, heating line in there, and that's all.
Um, and it probably be who does to create a budget line for the maintenance of the town hall. Um. Who can we get to, uh, assess the blinds? And you, can you tell if they're useful or not useful, who do I know, or anyone else on the committee?
I installed them when we moved our office down there.
When you were temporarily in.
Yeah, they were, they were put in because we had office space in there, we needed some kind of privacy.
What year was that?
Sixteen, they have.
Yeah, not that long ago.
All right. I don't see that one.
They were, you know.
Home Depot.
Box, box store.
Yeah, yeah.
Blinds that were fairly inexpensive and just installed.
Do they serve a useful function now, you put them in it, cause you had office.
They have the screen up over there that the library uses for events, and so they close those when they have, uh, have some kind of showings and things.
Well, to keep the sun out in the summer, to keep it from being too stupid hot in there.
Uh, you know, I'm willing to meet any one of you or designate an alternate there, and like, besides that, I just don't feel it's my fault, but I would gladly meet anybody and.
I am your, I am your rep at this time, though we've never met. Um, so I would mind meeting you over there to look at blinds, I've got thirty-five year old blinds in my house, and could certainly compare them, what pine are doing. But that would be, that would be steps, so if we can get a, see how many of the windows actually can get the inserts, and whether or not the blinds are. New valuable enough to allow.
Do you remember, Ken, the fairly standard, uh, widths for the blinds?
Yeah, they weren't custom, okay, we just saw that, we needed something, and I found the nearest size that fitted in.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They've had shutters in there, I think, I think it's been at least twenty of them through the years.
Yeah, there was a wing, like. Yeah, and we took all the window shutters out twenty years ago, it was the worst selection.
There was a big stink about it too, if I recall.
It was.
Probably historic.
Yeah.
Where are they?
Oh, don't have.
Can we?
I don't know.
Can we, can we bring them back to life? Well, I'd be happy to meet you there someday and, and look at, um, the windows, if you measure, and I'll see if I can figure out, make some kind of guesstimate on the worth of the blinds.
Um, I'm, I'm probably starting like Friday this week, uh, school starts next week, so.
Oh.
Actually, be kind of working first.
I think Friday's fine. Let's say yes. One moment, please.
Oh, my, I need to my calendar, man.
Yes, Friday's fine. That's with you.
I am, okay. Uh, so that's, um.
Just erase her.
Oh, so it's the twenty-third?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Oh, um, all right, okay. Well, it might be late that afternoon, I just don't know yet. Are they able to weekends?
Yes.
That might, because Monday leaves Wednesday for two weeks, so I'll be by myself for a few weeks.
So is the weekend that, the, the weekend of the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth better?
I'm gonna make that work then.
Okay. Uh, if you can text me, that would be fine, I'm going to, all right.
Okay.
And then another step before we are able to finalize, we'd be probably gonna let the HDC win.
Yeah.
Make sure that they're okay with.
Is this one of those you can just kinda grab Kevin Bragg on the side, or we have to do a formal? If we can talk about it.
Yeah. I think Kevin will make that call probably, so.
I mean, it doesn't. It's a pretty, it's a pretty big difference between white and, and pine enough.
But do you have a preference?
Especially if we're gonna spend a couple hundred bucks on blinds.
Do you have a preference on Saturday or Sunday?
No.
All right, I just wanna go up here.
I do not have a preference.
I just want you to come and see if you're up against, I might be, take a little bit longer if I'm gonna assess all, do you guys, are we, you wanna stick to just the main room?
I think so, what do you think?
I wanna do all of them, I, I wanna see it through, because I think we're gonna find we can take windows out then and leave these inserts in until we get the windows back, is what I'm thinking.
I understand.
Thinking, and it's still a single pane window when we get done.
So the main room, including the.
No, that, that, I'm not even talking about that.
Oh, okay, so the main, yeah, yeah.
No, that's why he was asking, that, that we wanna do everything, including the addition.
Not the addition, we've already said that.
No.
The main room and the stor, the two in the store.
The two in the store.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't know why I miscounted it, sorry about it. So I may stay longer, Beth, but if you, if we meet, we can show you whatever it is, then you can.
No, that's, that is, that is.
That's, it'll probably take me thirty quarters minutes to do all this, that's why I wanted to.
Okay.
And, um, so, just so I understand, I, I wasn't sure, is window dressers a subcommittee of the energy committee?
So, right now, window dressers is pretty much the energy committee. So we have a, the, the slight thing that you'll see, we have a membership problem on the energy committee, because Howard Mopeth, Brett Corney, and Claudia Linder stepping off.
Yeah.
So it's basically Jeff and I and Ruth is our alternate, so I have a real membership problem on the energy committee right now. Um, and I'm actually proposing, trying to get to community power committee and say, do you guys wanna combine?
Well, it's funny that you bring that up, uh, it seems, uh, cause I was thinking about that as well, and it seems like it should be a good thing to have, uh, if we can do a work session. With CCPC and the energy committee and see how.
Maybe once, maybe the ones like a subset committee energy, ah, or something, but I, I have a membership on our committee, and this is pretty much half of my. The last three weeks, I've been dedicated to this.
Yeah.
We haven't, we're not packed by anything else on the energy committee right now.
And CCPC has got lots of ideas, but you're down a couple of members too with Ellie leading, Hallie leading.
Oh, Kelly Power as well, oh, Kelly, uh, funny, okay.
Stonebreaker.
And Kelly and Ben.
Yeah. She wasn't on CCPC, that was it?
No, she came in for the other meetings, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, uh, I advanced that idea of, of Lenora Howe.
Yeah.
She was not against it. Maybe the technique.
Is that something?
Did everybody in the room and have that discussion?
Yeah.
Is that something that we should all do in the same place at the same time as it works? Is that something that we should all do in the same place at the same time as a work session? How would anybody else think that that should be organized? Or let them hash it out?
No, I think these are software oriented, right? So I think we should be there by.
Yeah. Yeah. Um when would be a good time on a on the schedule to start that? Is there something pressing? I mean, C C P C has a lot of good ideas, but I don't know how pressing any of them are or, you know, window dressers, you've got an October first deadline, you're gonna be out straight with that. Um.
Well, why don't we send out some dates?
Right. Okay.
I'm all for that.
We'll set up a work session, how about that? Get everybody in the same room, same place.
It makes, they're both committees involved with energy thing. It's a little different, I guess, but.
Well, and but and both missing people, important people.
And we have some crossover people, yes.
Yeah.
So, good. Alright. Yeah.
Alright, so Beth, I owe you a message on when uh we can meet Saturday or Sunday?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm around all weekend.
Okay, yeah, I'm too. So can be bored again next two weeks.
And I have a key.
Huh?
And I have a key.
And I.
Very important.
Yeah, I think once we know what we're gonna be doing, then we better make sure we make the T C's consultant.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's the.
Alright, so I wanna see this thing again.
Yeah.
Oh, that is pretty different. Why is it so much more? Jeez.
What's that? Oh, the upper parts of, this is probably labor. You guys sit there and pay them, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, I assume it's a spray and uh.
Probably.
Okay.
Alright, well, hopefully early next weekend we can all send out a ask, you know, a more reasonable cost estimate.
Yeah.
So once I measure it, the software I use allows me to do it as an estimate and place an order. So I can give, if I get number of windows fixed, I can get you a pretty fixed number without facing.
Okay, that sounds good.
So probably by our next meeting we'll have numbers.
Yeah, when was your next meeting? Nine?
Nine, yeah, of September.
It's gonna be a biz, a duties and budget coming in and uh the school board?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Correct.
But that shouldn't take long just to get numbered.
Hopefully by then we'll have the numbers.
Yeah. Okay.
A chance to unleash more of it open.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, I appreciate the board's uh um support of this, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Appreciate your time.
Before you leave, does that, do you know often whether we'll have another uh energy, whether there will be another energy?
Uh I had talked to Ruth for, that's just window dressers. We're meeting Friday, but we're in a little ad hoc meeting just window dressers.
Okay.
I don't have a. It's gonna be.
Okay. Let me know.
Alright, I will. Thank you.
Alright, I can all hear from you this weekend.
Yep.
Alright, so while we're waiting for our, we have a six day.
Can I join?
Yes, uh and they are supposed to, they may be joining us via Zoom. I'm not sure.
Who?
B J Andrews.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Alright, so I think we're at old business now? Tree in front of the Elkins Museum?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yes, um I got an estimate from Goon to take down that tree.
Yeah.
Um it's eighteen hundred dollars to take the tree down, another five hundred dollars to take the stump out, to grind the stump.
Yeah. We have the money.
Always a always a good question.
That's a. It's about twenty three hundred dollars to get it.
We are talking about the big dead pine that's on the corner of the the memorial, Elkins Memorial. Yeah, that really is dead.
Yeah, that's correct. Correct.
Yeah.
Spruce.
Yeah.
Uh.
Spruce, spruce.
We have three thousand dollars in our tree removal budget higher than that. We haven't spent any other things. We do have a life.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah.
We'll leave this for what, seven hundred?
Lots?
That has come down before it falls down.
I don't think we got, I don't think we got much time.
I agree, I mean, I I think it's just gotta come down.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um we are going to have to hire a police detail because of the traffic, cause he's gonna have to set up the crane.
Yeah.
Um so Brian said that 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 would be something and I thought we could do that through the police department.
Yeah.
Um but it's gonna have to be overtime because we don't want somebody leaving in the middle of it.
We're used to. Yeah.
Oh.
When the tree's halfway down.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So do you think the seven hundred remaining will cover?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
The detail?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And that'll that'll kill the.
Yeah, yeah.
Um does that seven hundred dollars need to come out of tree removal budget or police detail budget or does it matter?
Uh we would take it out of the tree. It's a it's a it's a right block and left block. It's gonna, it's coming out of the budget somewhere.
Either way. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I would say we'll ju- my guess is we'll just add tack it on to the overtime wages of the police department.
Yeah.
And just leave it at that. Um it'll be on the books as they're working for the town. Um but but it's gonna be, you know, as far as their books go, as far as our books go, it's just police department overtime.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I didn't know we needed to leave seven hundred bucks, you know, technically in tree removal in case some tree falls down or whatever.
Yeah, it's, well, I mean, we will. It's we'll leave seven hundred dollars in there. The overtime budget for the police department is just gonna show that whatever overtime.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds.
It's just like to be able to hire an officer overtime for a shift.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Replacing the tree by center sent?
Alright, that's the one I assume that just got taken down, right?
Yes. Uh there was a question about, so the tree's down, the stump has been ground. I know when we talked about this, they didn't, they weren't gonna support uh or Eversource wasn't, or Uta wasn't gonna buy us a new tree. Um I had a question the other day from the resident asking if we were planting a tree there and I said that was the intent, but I didn't know when. And we have two thousand dollars in the center maintenance line that we haven't expended yet, so I didn't know if you wanted to look into putting a tree in using that line.
Seems like a good place to use it.
Yeah, how how much do you think?
Uh tree removal.
I, when Kevin was in here, seemed to me he was talking about a tree that was like three inches, less than three or no more than three inch or no less than three inches in diameter. It was five, six hundred bucks or something like that.
Yeah, I guess what he is.
That 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 sound right, Ken? I don't know, I.
You don't want anything too scrawny.
No, I I would think something too small, something um. So do you want me to follow up with Kevin on that?
Right.
I think so.
Yeah, okay, I think we're all agreeing on that.
He'll do it too. I mean, he he'll take care of laundry and shit.
Right, that's what I think, you know.
Sounds good. I think that's, that's gonna be a very popular decision.
Yeah.
Alright, uh anything more on that? Okay, Comcast franchise agreement.
Nope. Yeah, so I sent you guys electronic copy of the franchise agreement, had discussion with Beth today.
Yeah.
Um you know, Scott, I talked to you earlier. You both had the same question about the density requirement. It is still in there.
Yep.
Um. I had talked with Ryan about that, Ryan Christiansen about that a little bit on the phone when he sent this. And he said, well, given the fact that they're gonna be more or less covering the town a hundred percent as it is, uh that he didn't feel it's gonna be an issue. Um Beth and I, we our conversation was that that maybe we could uh put something in that franchise agreement that that kind of spells that out.
It seems like it should be reflected what their current.
Yeah, so I I just I just drafted a real quick uh that the fran- and it would be added to section uh three point one, which is the the density requirement. Just says the franchisee agrees that as of April first, two thousand twenty five, one hundred percent of the town of Canterbury will have access to cable service. Any additional construction will be subject to density requirements outlined above. Something along those lines. I mean, that was just kind of a rough, two minutes, I just wrote something down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So the intent is if, let's say, somebody builds on Southwest Road, Northwest Road, Chaker Road, any of the main, the cables there already.
Cable runs, yeah, I think almost I, from what I gathered was that cable's gonna be strong in front of pretty much on every road in town. Uh and then if it goes by the house, then it's 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 you have access to it.
Right. Right.
Uh but if somebody chooses to build a new road or a new subdivision or something like that, then that would be subject to the to the density requirement.
Right. Right.
That they made out of.
Right. And they're normal, if I remember one of the times when Brian was here, my memory is he said the, in general, the first two hundred feet.
Says right in the franchise agreement, two hundred feet is is uh free of charge. I think beyond that is.
And that's in there, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, actually, but though didn't they say later that 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 could be subject to negotiation, that maybe it wasn't hard and fast and?
Well, that was that was for this project that they're doing now, because they they received grant money based on how many, I think, miles of and I think they call it aerial miles because they differentiate between aerial and ground.
Aerial and trench, yeah.
And um I think it was based on aerial miles, so they may have some money left over, so if there's somebody with a driveway that's five hundred feet long, they may be able to sort of align that without.
And we don't.
But we don't know that.
And we don't know that we, I mean, that doesn't need to be, I guess what I was asking is, does that need to be spelled out or is that one of those things that like?
I think this is a one time, that's a one time deal only with this project and my house.
Absolutely, okay, got it. So the density thing is, to me, it's much more important to get that spelled out to our current understanding with them, what they're doing then, yeah.
Um. Yeah. 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 And I can give him a proposal and see what he says as well.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
Okay. The other thing that I noticed was the date was like August fifth of twenty, the date seemed wrong.
He dated the day that he sent it to me, so it was just, I think it was August fifth or something.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 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 August.
So we can change the date on it, that's the last page, yeah.
Okay. And the only other thing was, um when you get to the very, very last page, it's like a a appendix two or whatever they call it, the very end, it says
Yeah.
services we're providing. It's all network or it's all TV, sports, entertainment, blah, blah, blah. This may be the stupidest question ever, but it doesn't spell out anywhere that they're going to be providing internet services. It just says TV, entertainment, blah, blah, blah. Does it need to specify? I mean, that's the, people are not clamoring for this connection for to watch TV.
Yeah.
They're clamoring for it so they can work at home and have good internet capabilities, but I don't see that listed anywhere unless it's a it's a phrase that has a double meaning that I'm not aware of. When you look at that last page, it doesn't specify it.
Uh says franchisee shall provide the following categories of video programming.
Yeah.
It talks about that. Um.
Those are the, that's the page right there. It says, what are those five, please?
Yeah. That's exhibit, that's exhibit uh B.
Yeah, but what do they, what do they list? Please.
Oh, news programming, sports programming, public affairs, children, entertainment and local programming.
Yeah, and that's what it says they're providing. So I just wanna make extra sure.
Hmm.
Yeah, I I'll have to go through and see if it specifies uh broadband.
I didn't see it, but that that doesn't mean it isn't there.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if, you know, I looked up uh, what's it called on the front of franchise agreement, you know, uh blah, blah, blah. That doesn't specify that it has to include its cable.
Yeah, I thought this is, it's it really, it talks about cable in those whole thing.
Well, just along as cable, it definitely means that. Um and is it the code word for something else? I just I just wanted to be painfully clear that indeed what we're getting is what everybody's clamoring, which is the internet, not the programming.
Yeah, it talks about stereo treat TV transmissions, programming, cable chan-channels.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those are gonna say anything about broadband.
Uh no, it does not.
And I really.
I'm glad, that's a good thing I'm.
Yeah. And I guess what about a minimum speed or what?
Uh yeah.
And yeah, I would I would say that would have to be put in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
In big red letters, please. Or we would have a lot of unhappy people.
Yeah.
I can't imagine that it's not hard.
Yeah, I.
And yet.
And again.
It doesn't say it, so.
And yeah, and my my guess is, well, I I I'm sure any of the grant money they're getting is for broadband. That is what they're giving it for.
That that's all very well for us to assume that, but you know, on that list at the end, if it said broadband with minimum speeds of blah, 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 that would make me happier.
Yep.
Alright.
Alright, I'll add that to my list.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. He's probably gonna roll his eyes and say like, of course it does. But just just spell that one out.
Well, this this agreement, this this was done I can't remember the first year that they did this. It was it was eighty something? Eighties when they did this, the first one?
Hmm.
So I don't know if they provided internet back then or not.
Maybe they just never, you know, if it's boilerplate, nobody ever thought to go back and put it in, but um yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
Brandon, I see B J's here, yeah.
Good. Alright, how about um twenty twenty four audit results?
Thank you.
Okay. Um so Beth and I had a conversation about the audit, um specifically the governmental letter.
So I sent you both, I sent to Ken and then blind copy you and and Kent about my thoughts on that, so.
You did?
Yeah. Uh I talked about, what it boils down to is an unfunded liability of of people with uh that retire from the town of Canterbury. Um this has been the the audit for the last five or six years. Um So I did send a note, I sent an email to our auditors asking, inquiring if they could get some information for us
Hmm.
to see what it would cost if they do it, they provide that service, or if they don't, if they owe somebody that did and and a cost associated with it.
So what are we offering? Um in, let's say, highly, we hire a new full time with benefits employee.
Correct. Correct.
Pension.
Yep.
Is gonna be, and what about there's no more medical after retirement?
After after retirement, alls we offer is a COBRA case and and um that is only, the COBRA is only good for six, nine months, I'm sorry, nine months.
Yep. Yeah.
So um so that's that's what we offer. Um.
And once someone full time retires, we're no longer responsible for anything, correct?
We are not. The only the only responsibility we bear is to the national retirement system.
Right.
While the employees are employed.
Right.
Um and that that's where this unfunded liability comes in, because there is an unfunded liability with the state retirement system.
Yeah.
And that's why this is included in our audit, because we have people that are in that program.
Yeah.
Um so that's that's why it's included in the audit.
Right.
Um it has not been an issue. Uh what was first brought up was because of the change of the law, that they had to spell it out.
Yeah.
But that was, the auditors at the time, they have since said we have to include it in the governmental letter. Um they said they include it with most municipalities that don't have an actuarial or somebody that has the uh that that does the the um I guess crunches the numbers for the liability, so.
Yeah.
Um but we can, we I'd like say I sent a note to our auditors to see if we could get that.
I mean, if it's not a huge amount to find out what that number is, um kind of like spelling out is broadband included in this?
Hmm.
To me, this is one of those things is, you know, okay, it's not a problem, but how much of a not a problem is it?
Hmm.
Is it a little not a problem or, you know, a slightly bigger not a problem? It just seems reasonable to me to have it spelled out if it's not gonna break the bank to find out what that is.
Yeah, and and the only time this would ever I guess the only the only time that this ever be a become a problem is if the retirement system cease to exist, then we would be responsible for that, those that those retirement funds.
Yeah.
But thing but things change yearly and as we get more full time employees, which, you know, to me, it seems like it's likely it's gonna happen.
And 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 that is the, that is the thing about this, it would be a, it would be not not be a static number.
Right, no, you would have to be calculated every year.
This should not be a static number, yeah, correct, yeah.
So if there's a, you know, again, if it's enough budget and it's not a huge thing to always carry that along, so we know what that is, we're always looking at it just in case. Um again, if it's if it's a huge number, I would feel differently, but if it's not huge to find out, I'd rather I personally, I'd rather know than not.
Might be interesting to see what it is, I guess, that, just so we all know.
But. Um. But the the auditors will be able to answer, uh at least if they can do it.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you for commenting on that.
Okay, and um last item, I think we've sort of covered already, dirt roads.
Yep. Uh I do have one more of the tricentennial committee. We received uh five emails
Sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
for five people that have volunteered to be on the committee.
Alright.
Great.
And then we're found with a sufficient number for us to form a committee. And didn't know if that was a sufficient number for us to form a committee?
Yeah.
It's a pretty good number, actually.
Alright.
It's, as I say, a good working, uh, number.
So, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's a good.
Alright. We will draw up some appointment slips and, uh, have them for the next meeting, and all the five other people.
Sounds good.
And then we had talked about having the first meeting in September?
The ninth?
It'd be good. Not, not, and, the first meeting of the tricentennial committee of Trid.
Do you want, when do you, if we're gonna do appointment slips on the ninth, when do you want them to come in? We're having a budget committee on the ninth, probably easier the next meeting.
Right.
Yes.
Which will still be September, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can draw up more people, you know.
Well, yeah, actually.
Right.
Could always use more help.
Alright.
Alright.
Looks like B J is all, uh.
B J, can you hear me?
She just saw her and then go.
Yes, I can hear you.
Hello. Hi, B J.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you.
B J, you're here, um, Canterbury Citizens for Democracy event in the center.
Yep, should I just talk about it?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, um, we are, we wanna hold a sort of center of town lawn party, afternoon party to welcome, uh, people to come and listen to the four Democratic candidates, maybe five. And this would be Saturday, September 28th, rain date, September 29th, from three to five. And we would have the candidates speak very briefly at the beginning and then mill around and talk to people who are planning to get food of some kind. Uh, maybe Dave will make pizzas, but he may be too busy, um, and hire somebody to have games for kids. Um, fairly simple affair, uh, just a way to get a lot of people to hear what people have to say and have a chance to meet them. We might wanna put up tables and chairs on the lawn in front of the church, but I should talk to them.
Yeah.
So, that's basically the gist of the idea.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds, it does.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be a bipartisan event to be in the town. I mean, anybody can come and hear the Democratic candidates.
Right.
So.
We have, have we ever, I don't even know, um, have we had other, um, political events of this nature? I think we have, it looks like we have.
I mean, you have a, they did a, a march the day of registering their candidates and.
Yeah.
So they've done other stuff, might, my sense, I don't, I just wanna make sure I'm doing it right.
Yeah. I guess a couple of questions, so how many people do you think might attend?
Uh, if we get fifty, I'd be amazed.
Okay.
Maybe fifty to a hundred, but
Okay.
I'd be very surprised if it was that many, I'd love it.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess things to consider are parking and trash.
Yep, okay, trash, that's a great one.
Yeah.
Alright.
And don't forget the store, I assume, will be open while you're doing.
It'll be open, and we'll encourage people to buy drinks in there and.
Yeah, but I guess I'm more concerned by the mix of pedestrians and cars.
Got it, okay. We could have people park, um, the way they do for the farmer's market, maybe.
Yeah.
Sort of away from the store, so that's a great point, Scott, okay, parking and trash.
Right. And then, B J, your going, your plan, I assume, is to seat them or, or have the, um, audience people stand on the lawn, not in the parking lot, right?
Yes, I mean, people would speak at the gazebo, kind of like the reading of the Declaration of Independence.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, just be, you know, and I'll, I'll find some kind of amplification system.
Where, the library?
Yeah, we wanted to tell all.
Okay.
That's, that's library, yeah.
No, that was, uh, that was the house.
Oh.
That was used for how we, and it worked, it worked great, yeah.
B, B J, um, I would say reach out to Ken for a sound system.
This Ken?
This, this Ken, full of our Ken.
Thank you, I, all I can see is the top of your head, thank you. Hey, Ken, thank you.
And then, um, try, the other thing to consider, B J, is trash.
Trash, that's a great point.
You know, and, and getting it, you know, from, from there to the transfer station.
Okay, I like the practical suggestions.
Yeah.
We wanna leave it pristine.
Exactly.
Do we need to, any police presence?
I don't think so with an event, who knows?
I don't know. I just, like, parking people.
Yeah, B, B J, the date again, what are you considering?
Saturday, September 28th, three to five, rain date, the 29th.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I.
We're trying to get families with young kids.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't think with police.
I don't see it as a divisive, difficult thing, I mean, there are other times, obviously, in the recent few years where it might feel the way, but that doesn't feel like it to me.
Agreed.
So.
You've done a tree lady before. Right. Right, exactly, yeah.
We need Kamala to come out, or?
I'd love to. That'd be awesome. Yeah.
I wasn't, I wasn't worried about traffic so much as the politics, I mean, just in case anybody decides to get crappy, uh, but it, it seems more like, you know, C C four D
Oh, you're sure, yeah.
is pretty neighborly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
Any objections?
No.
No?
Great, thank you so much.
Alright, thanks, B J.
Yeah, it is.
See you guys around town.
Okay, take care.
Bye.
Alright, Ken, I'll give that back to you.
Stay safe for the rest of the meeting, B J, if you're gone.
Yeah, something I'd like to discuss.
Sure. Alright, so why don't, Ken's got, Kent has something he wants to?
So I was, uh, there's been a move for to, uh, have a party for Lois and Howie. Uh, the date has been tentatively set as, um, September 8th. I believe it was the Sunday.
Something on the, on board of the.
It was in the town email, and.
Yeah, it's been in twice on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, I mean, I don't know if they needed to check with the town, but they have asked me to sort of.
Where, where would it be taken, please?
I'm gonna do it over in the town hall.
Yeah.
I'm gonna strip the tables out of here, along with the tables we got over there, so we got some places to sit.
Yeah.
There're not chairs, I think, over there.
Yeah, okay.
So it's at two o'clock on that Sunday afternoon.
Okay. Sounds like a great idea.
I think the doors will be open and people will just be milling, is my guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
Make your, uh, lemon tart or something, bring it.
Yeah, I know, I think Kathy's already been asked to bring, yeah, something, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead, of course, and Beth, I'm guessing, might have something up her sleeve.
Um, I'm doing posters and invitations and, um, and, um, bubbly.
Sounds weird.
Or is that my nephew's fiftieth birthday, hard to tell, yeah. Good.
Alright, anything else before we, it sounds like we need to go into executive session, Beth, anything?
Um, wait, I'm just looking down the, the boarder here. Uh, no, all set.
Alright, um, Cal, we're gonna turn into executive session for.
Who's gonna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, for, um, for matters if which discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board.
Could I see that?
Yeah.
I, I can't remember all that.
It's, uh, C, it's the third, third option.
Got it, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we turn into executive session for the purpose of matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board, unless such a person requests an open meeting. All those in favor, alright? Alright, thank you.